I'd like to welcome you here tonight. We're just a couple of minutes away from beginning the meeting. Before we begin, I'd like to invite you to stand, join me in the pledge, and then I'll lead the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to live in this great city. I thank you, Lord, for each of these servants up here and for each of our residents who've come tonight, and those that may be watching. God, we just ask that you guide us as we make decisions that are best for our city and the people that live here. And we trust you for that guidance now, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
All right. I'd like to welcome you again to the regular meeting of Springdale City Council. This is Tuesday, June 12th, 2018. We do have large print agendas available. Wyman's holding them up there if that would be helpful to anyone. And with that said, I'm going to call the meeting to order and ask our city clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Sprouse.
Here.
Rick Culver.
Here.
Jeff Watson.
Here.
Mike Overton.
Here.
Colby Fulfer.
Mike Lawson.
Here.
Rick Evans.
Here.
Jim Reed.
Here.
Kathy Jay Cox.
Here.
Ernest Cade.
I am here.
All right, thank you. This is the, we're at item four. If you're following along, this is the part of the meeting that the council sets aside at each regular meeting in order to hear comments from our citizens. If there is anyone that would like to address the council tonight, we ask that you come to the microphone, clearly state your name and address, and please understand that the council won't be acting on anything you have to say tonight. So if there's anyone that would like to address the council concerning an item that is not already on tonight's agenda, you're welcome to come at this time. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item five, the approval of minutes. Council, you've had the opportunity to look over these minutes. If there are no changes or additions, I'd entertain a motion to approve them as presented.
If none so moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you. Item six, procedural motions. What's your pleasure, council?
Move for A and B.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second for both six A and B. Roll call, please.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Culver.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Fulfer.
Yes.
Carries eight zero.
Mayor.
Yes.
I would like to suggest that we change the order of items on the agenda and move item number nine up in front of item seven, since there are a number of people here
All right.
that would be interested in doing that.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to move item nine up to, it'd be our next item then. Motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Culver.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Fulfer.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Carries eight zero.
Okay, this was discussed in Finance Committee, Reports and Recommendations. Chairman and Jeff was there to chair that meeting. Jeff, do you have anything to say first before we, I'm asking that this item get tabled tonight.
May I make a comment after Mr. Watson?
Go ahead.
Sure. Well, first thing I'd like to say is, on the agenda, where it states the resolution, you know, what the resolution is, it says the committee recommended approval. That's not really accurate. And some of y'all were here at the committee meeting last Monday evening, and there was a lot of discussion, but there was no recommendation for approval of any site.
Right.
for the animal shelter.
That's correct.
It was just recommended by the committee to forward the resolution to the council tonight. And since that time, Mayor, you had apparently come up with another possible option, and it's my understanding that you were going to request that this resolution be tabled tonight to give us the opportunity to consider that option.
That's right.
And so, the problem I have, and actually, I'm for the tabling once we get to that point, but for any of the people that are here tonight, that were also here at the committee meeting, if we do end up tabling the resolution for tonight, I want to apologize because I was very, I was very, I don't want to say strict, but I tried to keep that discussion at the committee meeting limited to questions about the two different sites, and tried to restrict opinions, and kept telling the audience that they'd have the opportunity tonight to come and give their opinion as to their desires, or wishes, or opinions for one side or the other. And it appears that if we table tonight, we won't have that discussion tonight. It'll be on another night. And probably, we'll have another committee meeting to consider the third option before we actually come back to the council.
Right.
And have the full discussion from the audience.
Yeah, and there's no guarantee on this because we're having the site evaluated by our architects. So we don't know for sure, and won't know, how feasible that site is until we get the information back from them. The goal is to have that back in time for next week's, next Monday's committee meeting. And then, if that's the case, if you all want to do the same thing in two weeks at council that you were planning to do tonight, and that is discuss the location then, my hope is that we'll have a third option, and I believe it's a very good option. It's no secret. It's 12.33, I think, acres, just west of Central Junior High School on Huntsville Avenue. And I think it's an excellent site, but again, we don't have all our answers yet, and all the information we would need. And we certainly wouldn't want to make that decision tonight anyway, because everyone has, deserves an opportunity to weigh in on that site as well. Mike?
Yeah, Mayor, we've had, you know, several discussions on this. A lot of people have been involved. And we came up, as you mentioned, we came up now, we have a third site, and your recommendation is that we table this resolution. And my motion would be that we table this resolution with the understanding that we're withdrawing the J.B. Hunt Park as consideration for a site for the animal shelter. That's my.
I would certainly support that.
I'll second that.
I'd second that also.
All right, so if this passes, and our discussion next Monday will be, hopefully, two sides.
Two sides.
And through this conversation, if there's, if there are other people listening out there, which is exactly what's driving this forward right now, and somebody else has another site that's an opportunity, I think they should definitely contact the mayor or any member of the city council, because this has been a heated discussion that didn't have to take place this way. We all want to protect everybody's property. We want the best for the animal shelter. We want the best for our city. So if there is another option out there, other than J.B. Hunt, or now, if that's off the table, McCullough or the Central Junior High, then please, don't hesitate to contact the city.
And I appreciate the motion and the reason I support it, and we've got it, is because we have people who've been to every meeting since this discussion began, and we have an opportunity to at least cut them loose.
The only problem with, the only problem with that, Mayor, you know, I'd like to cut you loose too, but I'm a stickler for detail. The only problem I have with that is that you put out a public notice that you were going to request that this item be tabled tonight. So there is a possibility, I don't know if it's true or not, but there's a possibility that there could have been people that wanted to come tonight to argue for J.B. Hunt, but because.
That's true.
you suggested that it was going to be tabled, they may not have come, and now they would not have an opportunity to discuss that.
That's a fair point.
I would like to also say that if we do this, I don't know that it would be, I don't know, appropriate to just bring those two options to the council again. After we've had public input session, we spent a lot of time on that, and then to make a decision on these two properties without having another public input session, and giving everyone the same opportunity to discuss it as we have with the J.B. Hunt location, I just, I feel like this, to be fair, would take a considerable amount of time to go back and redo all the conversations we've already had on this. I would say if we're going to do that, that we need to open it back up to another public discussion, just to give everyone the same opportunity in case they have opposition to that location.
Which is the point Ms. Jay Cox was making, I think.
But I'm also going to make the point that I had several calls. People know that I was part of the discussion in the beginning. I was part of Shelters Across America and the assessment that we did then for the property regarding the shelter. Many people called me after they heard this was going to be tables and said, do they need to come tonight if they were in support of J.B. Hunt? And I said, no, that's not important tonight because we table it. It will remain part of the discussion. So for those of you that would like it off the table, I can't support that only because of the promises that I made to others in this city. I would do the same for each and every one of you.
I also have a question to ask on this. In order, I think, for us to make a decision to table this, we might want to consider some of the information that we have about this property, just so everybody knows why we're wanting to table it, what the other opportunity is, maybe if we know what the property's going to cost, where the extra money will come from, those kind of details, so that we can make an informed decision if we want to table the decision.
I will tell you that we were looking at possibly, our looking, at possibly an additional half million dollars or more to develop the Ford Avenue site. This property has been offered to the cost of the city, this 12 acres, at $750,000. Now, obviously, it would have to appraise, and all those issues would have to flesh out. But the difference in this property is that it's 12 acres. The back third of this property will be bisected by the Pride of Springdale Trail, which is the future trail that will connect Springdale High School and the Greenway, actually, to Harbor High School. There's a, that could develop a park area behind the new animal shelter. The animal shelter would be closer, if it'll lay out right, would be closer to Huntsville. And that would allow, that would allow an opportunity for, out of the animal shelter bond, just to purchase the amount of property needed for the shelter, and out of the parks bond, to purchase the remainder of the property. We could possibly get out of this with little, or at least very little additional money out of CIP. Looking at the Ford Avenue site, there's a very real possibility that we could be looking at significant money out of CIP. So I believe this is very doable if all those things work out. And those are big ifs. But in answer to your question, Colby, and how would we do this, and some of those other particulars, that's the way I would hope this would go. But we don't have those answers, but we'll have a better idea of those answers, hopefully, by next week.
The parks money that would be used, you're saying, out of the parks bond money?
Yeah. And, you know, keep in mind also, we've got, I think it's a 10% contingency on the estimates for the animal shelter. That's half a million dollars. So if we can, if we can hang on to that contingency and not, and be very frugal with it, then we could well come out of this without spending a lot more money. But the goal, as I mentioned at the committee, and I know as Kathy and others have said, the goal is to not have to reduce the building, what our needs are, as a result of having to pay for property or pay for additional site work. And I think that's, I think that's very important, because we're talking about a facility that's going to serve us for many, many, many years. So location is important, but also building the right thing is important. And we have, you know, I'm not bashful at all about saying that I'm very excited about this site if the reports come back from the architect that this is a good buildable site. This is the most centrally located site we've been able to consider. It's got tremendous access with Huntsville Avenue. It's very, very visible. And in the future, it could very easily be connected to a park and a trail, which was our goal in the first place, or two of our goals in the first place. So.
Well, and to your point, Mayor, it also is right next to where there are a lot of kids, a lot of people.
Right.
A lot of visibility. So if the site works out, I think it would be a fabulous opportunity.
There are just too many unanswered questions right now.
But it's nice to have another option available for
Right.
the city to consider.
Okay, we've got a motion on the table, including the.
No, I would think that, I'm sorry, I would think that we could, if it gets tabled, that we would bring it up at the council, committee meeting on the.
Hopefully, next week.
Fifteenth.
Yep.
Yeah. And then we can decide on the 15th whether to forward it to the next council or not.
It's the 18th? Anyway, it's next Monday.
Yeah, the 18th, I'm sorry. Yeah, the 18th.
Right.
I'll say this for the record. The property is located next to my business, and I don't have any issue being close in proximity. My main concern is that this could draw on, again, having another public comment section and redoing everything we've done. I think we've seen, even with the Huntsville project from '71 to I-49, that I think we're doing a great job with securing bids by moving forward. And my personal opinion is, we have a viable option. I'd like to see us move forward with it, but I'm also okay with everyone else voting to discuss this at the next committee meeting. But I just wanted to say that.
Well, and Colby, you've been real good to remind us all along, and we're going to see a great example of this in the project you mentioned, the Huntsville overlay, that we're in a very favorable bid climate. So we certainly, if we go down the direction of the Huntsville site for the animal shelter, we certainly want to give everyone an opportunity to weigh in on that, but we, in my opinion, we can't stretch it out the way we have trying to decide between these two sites. We need to make a decision and get this thing designed so we can get it bid and built. But we'll give every opportunity we can for public comment, depending on what happens next Monday and how y'all want to move this forward. So the motion on the table now, and a second, is to table this, and as a part of that motion, to remove the consideration of J.B. Hunt Park as a.
Site.
As an option for the animal shelter.
Please consider all of those people.
How long are we tabling it for now, until, let's table it for two weeks?
Until the committee forwards it.
Until the committee forwards it?
Yep.
Okay. So if the committee does not make, is not ready to make a decision next Monday, then it might be after that?
Yep.
Okay.
Please consider the folks that were told not to come tonight to comment to this council.
Okay. Roll call.
Reed.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
No.
Culver.
Yes.
Watson.
Well, only because, as you said, Mayor, that we want to take all public comment, and by voting for this, we're prohibiting people, potentially prohibiting people from commenting on J.B. Hunt Park. So I'm going to have to vote no.
Overton.
Yes.
Fulfer.
No.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Carries five three.
Okay. We will be back at this Monday night, hopefully, with more information on the, on the new site. Ready to move to item?
Second.
Yeah, it's tabled, so we're ready to move to item seven.
So Mayor, if I'm not mistaken, would you tell them that J.B. Hunt's off?
Counsel just voted five three, counsel just voted five three to take J.B. Hunt Park out of consideration. Okay? And hopefully, you're all still going to be very interested in where this animal shelter goes, and you're going to be great supporters of all the great work our animal shelter does. So.
Can I clarify something on that?
Yeah, go ahead.
It wasn't necessarily just five three to take J.B. Hunt off. It was also the tabling side of it, because I don't want J.B. Hunt to be the location for it, but I voted no because I don't want a table. I just want to move forward.
Right.
With the other ones.
And I'll remind you one more time of the many people that were told that could come, not come tonight because it was going to be tabled. And they were supportive of J.B. Hunt. Not that that is something that, anyway. Just please understand.
I hope the new site comes forward.
I certainly do, too.
And they'll be great supporters of that, I hope. Okay, are we ready to move to item seven? Correct?
Yes.
Okay. Keep me in order here. And I'm going to turn that over to Ernest.
This is a resolution authorizing the mayor and the city clerk of the city of Springdale to accept a quitclaim of land from the Bentonville Belavista Trailblazers Association, EDBA WA Trailblazers. This is the property, the Fitzgerald Station property. I think you all knew this was coming. This would be the legal mechanism for the city to accept this land.
Would the resolution pass?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? Okay, great gift to the city here, and exciting things that are going to be happening out in that area. Anyone in the audience? Okay, Denise?
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Culver.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Fulfer.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed.
Yes.
Carries eight zero.
Item eight is, Patsy is coming for that.
The good news is, with the appropriation bill for the CBG program, we gained $28,425 instead of being cut. So this proposed.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars additional.
Right.
And we had anticipated we were going to be cut, but there were some cities in the state that were cut. We were fortunate enough to have an increase in amount.
I think we were one of just a handful or less of cities in Arkansas that actually saw increases.
Right.
Yeah.
And so this resolution is a resolution authorizing, a resolution adopting and approving the 2018 to 2022 consolidated plan, and the 2018 program year action plan for the community development block grant allows the mayor to sign the documents and submit it to. This would put in $25,000 for general program administration, which is 2.9%, would put in $759,425 into the housing services program, which is the housing rehab, lead-based paint and that, and then put $85,000 into the public services activities that you all selected at committee meeting, all of them being funded, and put us at 9.8% for a total of $869,425.
Patsy was the, we put the extra into the housing.
Yes, we put the extra $28,000 into housing.
That's what we need.
We didn't try, yeah, we left all of the amounts that you established for the public services.
That's original intent of the program anyways, for the housing. That's good.
Okay, any other questions?
Move the resolution pass.
Second.
Did we read it? I'm sorry.
Yes, I did.
Yes, I thought, I'm sorry, I thought you did.
Okay. Good deal. All right. Anyone else need to comment on this? Okay, Denise?
Culver.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Fulfer.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
Carries eight zero.
All right. We're at 10. So, Patsy, you're ready to roll on?
I'm ready to roll.
Okay.
The first item is the rezoning ordinance for the property in which you overturn the planning commission's decision to rezone the property from A1 to SF2. The title of the ordinance reads in ordinance, meaning ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from agricultural district A1 to low medium density, single-family residential district SF2, declaring an emergency.
Would the ordinance pass?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Other comments or questions? Anyone in the audience on this one? Okay, Denise?
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Fulfer.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Culver.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Would the emergency clause pass?
Second.
Overton.
Yes.
Fulfer.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Culver.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Fulfer.
Yes.
Carries eight zero.
Okay, the next item is for a food truck to be located at 101 West Johnson Avenue for Foghorns. Planning Commission again reviewed this one, recommends approval with the same following conditions. May not operate between the hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM. Health certificate is required. Display the health certificate in a manner visible to customers. No obstruction of pedestrian or motor vehicle traffic flow. No obstruction of traffic signals or regulatory signs. No vending upon a public way. No sound device that produces a loud and raucous noise in violation of city ordinance or violate any other city ordinance in connection with the vending operation. Sites to remain clean and free of paper or refuse of any kind generated from the operation of the business, with all trash or debris accumulating within 20 feet of any vending stand to be collected and deposited into trash containers and meet fire code requirements. The title of the resolution reads, a resolution proving a conditional use for Daryl Cousins at 101 East Emma Avenue, asset fourth and ordinance number 4030.
Would the resolution pass?
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions? Anyone? Okay, Denise?
Fulfer.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Culver.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes, and Mayor, this is directly behind the old Ellis Ice Cream parlor for your information.
Okay, thanks. I don't remember that parlor.
Is that in the trivia cards? Did anybody look to see if that's in there?
All right. Anybody else need to vote? Was he last? Good. All right, Patsy?
Okay, the next item is for a food truck to be located at 101 West Johnson Avenue for Foghorns. Planning Commission again reviewed this one, recommends approval with the same following conditions. May not operate between the hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM. If health certificate is required, display the health certificate in a manner visible to customers. No obstruction of pedestrian or motor vehicle traffic flow. No obstruction of traffic signals or regulatory signs. No vending upon a public way. No sound devices that produces a loud and raucous noise in violation of city ordinance or violate any other city ordinance in connection with vending operation. Sites to remain clean and free of paper or refuse of any kind generated from the operation of the business, with all trash or debris accumulating within 20 feet of any vending stand to be collected and deposited into trash containers, meet fire code requirements. Title of the resolution reads, a resolution proving a conditional use for Foghorns at 101 West Johnson Avenue is set forth in ordinance number 4030.
Would the resolution pass?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Rick, you're going to have to get quicker. You've been, you've been a half second behind on the last two seconds.
Foghorns has been there. Foghorns has been there for some time, but they are in getting their conditional use so they can remain there permanently.
Okay. Any other questions or comments, anyone? Okay, Denise?
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Culver.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Fulfer.
Yeah, I was waiting for the trivia. Carries eight zero. Well, that used to be the old home site there, but that's next to, it was one of the railroad employees that lived there, but don't worry about it.
Okay. Wow.
And who's going to question that, right?
Patsy.
The next item is a resolution approving a waiver of subdivision regulations in its streets and sidewalks and drainage improvements in connection with the preliminary plat for the Oasis subdivision on 56th Street. The 56th Street project is proposed to be included as part of the bond program, the 2018 bond program. Planning Commission is recommending that this be approved, subject to the needed improvements being included in the 2018 bond program. I don't think right now there's any action has been taken to set that one into action yet, but it is part of what is anticipated to be taken care of.
Yeah, this council, this would, this property would be included if we're able to improve 56th or Jean George north from Elm Springs Road to County Line.
Right.
This would be included in that, and I'm hoping we're going to be able to do that. So I know that we, in our discussions, everyone seemed to agree that that was an[1791.51]
Right, we, we need to address it by the, before the final plat comes forward if this is not part of what can be included in, in the bond program. Either they'll have to come back and ask for another waiver, or they'll have to do the improvement.
They'll have to go back to planning commission first?
Well, they'll have to come back to you guys because you're the ones that commit the money.
Okay, okay.
As to whether or not it would be waived entirely, or they would be required to make the improvement.
So hopefully by the time that happens, we'll, we'll have a better idea of whether or not we're going to be doing that portion of 56th.
Well, they seem to think they're gonna have the final plat ready in a hundred, a hundred and twenty days. That's really pushing it, that would, you know.
Well, if we can get these projects designed and bid, I'm pretty sure we're, and get these things going, I, I, I think we're gonna have plenty of room in the bond issue to do that section of 56th.
So I'm not sure I understood the answer to Rick's question. If we waive this tonight, the improvements for 56th Street, and then 56th Street is not improved under the bond program, it's already waived.
Well, this, because it says now there, and now therefore, that it is subject to the needed improvements being included in the 2018 bond program.
So if they're not included-
If it's not there, then they either have to do the improvements, or they have to come back to you guys, and you have to decide whether or not to grant the waiver or not.
Isn't that part of the, is there a grant that we're going for that might take some time?
We'll find out about that, I think, Brad, do we, we know the date on the, on the Tiger Grant? Hmm?
December eighteen.
November?
December eighteen.
December, okay. But I, I, that would, that grant would actually carry us further north, so-
Past County Line?
Past County Line, depending on how we route that. It, it, it would be to create a connection to Wagon Wheel, or to the Wagon Wheel interchange. Is that right? Is that how we worded it? So I, I think, I'm, I'm, I'm very, I'm very optimistic that we should be able to, depending on what other projects y'all wanna bring forward, that we should be able to do that. But this gives us a little, a little time until the, until the plat's-
Right.
Ready, so let's see where we're at then, because this, so this is conditional on, on that bond.
That's the condition that's put in this resolution for this project.
Any other questions or comments? Okay Denise? Oh, we don't have a motion, well then we can't vote.
Move the resolution to be adopted.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second, now, no other comments, go ahead Denise.
Evans?
Yes ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Here's eight zero.
Okay, the next one is the, a similar situation, asking for a waiver of street improvements in connection with Ramsey subdivision, which is on Ball Street. And the planning commission didn't set the same stipulation because at the time, we talked about it, planning commission weren't exactly sure because part of this road is in Elm Springs, the other side of the street is part, could be part of the Parks Project, this is a small portion of that. So they were recommending a waiver if it could be included, but we didn't put that stipulation on this because we weren't exactly sure. Mayor and I talked about it some this morning, it's a little bit more up in the air than the other one was.
It, not that we're doing improvements, but how those improvements, the scope of those improvements is still up in the air, since the way I think this is gonna shake out is that, that we're going to do the road improvements that, on the property that borders, the roads that border our new park, and we'll do both sides, curb and gutter, but we might, we probably wouldn't do sidewalks on the Elm Springs side. They can do that if they, if they would like to, but we probably wouldn't. But this is in Springdale for a short distance.
The, the full length on Ball Road is in Springdale?
Mike, can you go to the next, to the next slide?
The, the park is, or-
I know, I'm talking about this subdivision.
This subdivision's in Springdale, the property just to the north of it is Elm Springs, and is, the next piece is Elm Springs. The east side of the road is all in Springdale.
Would a bill of assurance be appropriate for sidewalks?
Well, we wouldn't, we wouldn't improve the west side of the road if-
If that's Springdale, this subdivision?
We're going to-
Just because we're doing the park on the east, why would we be improving the west side?
We can't, we, practically Jeff, with the drainage work that needs to be done out there, there's no way to improve half the road.
Okay.
We're gonna have to do the whole road, but we're gonna take the right-of-way off the Springdale side. So we're not, we're not gonna be in a situation buying right-of-way from, from Elm Springs residents.
Midway and County City, yeah.
The same will be true on the west County Line. We'll do the north, we'll move the road to the north as much as possible, as far as improvements and any widening we do.
Brian's suggestion is we do it the same way we did the other one, that it makes it subject to being included in the bond program. If it's not, then they'd have to come back and do the improvements and go back, and we can change-
Excellent, that's excellent idea.
We can, we can change the language of it to be the same as the one previously, and then that gives us time to work that out. If it's not worked out, by final plat time, they'll come back and address it differently.
Well, it already says, or, no, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it says denies a waiver. What we would do would be the same language as on the previous, that says it subject to the needed improvements being included in the 2018 bond program. We'd use the same language on that one, so option one. It's option one with that additional language, yeah.
Okay. Do we have a motion to that effect?
Move the resolution pass with those options, with that option.
Second.
A motion and a second, any further comments or questions? Okay Denise?
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer? Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Evans?
Yes.
Here's eight zero.
All right, Street and Capital Improvement Committee reports and recommendations by Chairman Rick Evans, Rick?
We mean last week, Street and CP, we've got several items on the agenda tonight, and all were brought with a mechanism for approval. The first one is an ordinance to waive competitive bidding for the repair of Lake Springdale Trailhead and for other purposes.
Move the ordinance pass.
Second.
Did we get a second?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear. Any other comments or questions?
Real quick, so they know that the reason we're waiving it is because we have a-
This is repairing the flood damage to the parking area?
We have a company in town already doing trails.
And got a really, what we believe is a really good bid on, on this one and, and the next one you're gonna hear too.
That's why there's emergency clause too.
Right, so they can get going on that.
Will some of this be refunded with FEMA money, or does this cover any of this?
FEMA money, we, they did write this as a project, and we should get reimbursement for this, for this project, as much as they'll, as much as they allow, yeah. Okay?
Yes, thank you.
All right, okay Denise?
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Evans?
Yes ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Move the emergency clause pass.
Second.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Evans?
Yes ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero.
Next, we have an ordinance to waive competitive bidding for the repair of Sanders Avenue Trailhead and for other purposes.
Move the ordinance pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, the difference, of course, this is the Sanders Avenue Trailhead, also the same flood, the difference is that this, and Ernest can speak to this if he needs to, but this will not be subject to FEMA reimbursement because at the time of the flood, it was, it was not public property, it was still in the hands of the contractor. So we're gonna have to flesh that out with the insurance, the contractor, the contractor's insurance, and, but we need to get it fixed, so.
We had, we had withheld more than this cost of repairing it, we had withheld more than this amount from the previous contractor due to liquidated damages and retainage, but we are going to proceed, pursue those other avenues as well.
Right.
I think also, we mentioned at the committee meeting, just for everyone's benefit, that we, we haven't really had that much success in trying, people bidding on these types of projects because they're not, I mean, that's why we're, I think, we said we were considering waiving the competitive bidding on these.
Right, okay. Anyone? Good deal.
I have a question.
Okay.
How, how do these numbers work? It's a hundred, in section one, it's a hundred and fourteen thousand four hundred and thirty-nine, and then appropriated a hundred and twenty-one four thirty-nine.
Does that, does that larger number, does that reflect the 10%, up to 10% contingency?
Not 10%.
Okay, I'm gonna have to get there and look at it.
Same thing that last one we did too, it was, it was different there too. I didn't catch it then. I know.
Let me look. Appropriated one. Hmm, Wyman, I'm gonna need your help on this one. If you have this in front of you.
The numbers they gave me were a little bit confusing. They had two different contingencies in there for it.
We can change the section three to be the same number as section one, if you'd like.
If you look on the second page behind it, they've actually got a hundred and fourteen thousand dollar proposal, but then they've got a three thousand dollar contingency for gutter that they don't know if they're gonna use, and then they've got an electric allowance, a plumbing allowance, materials testing, so not all of that's gonna be paid to the contractor. So they need more money appropriated than what the contractor is gonna be charging. Subcontractor allowances over and above their contracts, what they're saying. Right.
Okay. So you're appropriating the one twenty-one four thirty-nine?
Yeah. Right.
If you approve this. And we did get a second. Any other questions? Anyone? Okay Denise?
Watson?
I sure think that's an odd way of doing it, that. Along with it, yes.
That's a yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Evans?
Yes ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Move the emergency clause pass.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Evans?
Yes ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero.
Okay, thank you Wyman.
Next, we have an ordinance to waive competitive bidding and appropriating capital improvement funds for LED lighting at the Springdale Municipal Airport, this one we talked about before. We came back and got some bids, and they came in a lot better. Basically what we'll spend, we'll get back in no time, pardon the savings.
Move the ordinance pass.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Further comments or questions? Anyone? Okay Denise?
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Evans?
Yes ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Has emergency clause?
Move the emergency clause pass.
Second.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Evans?
Yes ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero.
Next, we have a resolution appropriating capital improvement funds for the repair of the roof of the Springdale Public Library, and this is basically part that the insurance doesn't govern.
Move the resolution pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, further comments or questions? Anyone? Okay Denise?
Evans?
Yes ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Three's eight zero.
And next, we have a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract for Huntsville Avenue, and this is for the, out of the, out of the bond program for the reserving of, uh, from the bypass all the way to, I guess, is to seventy-one business. Came in a lot better than what we thought it would.
Please the resolution pass.
Second.
The one we were talking about earlier that came in with such a great bid.
Right.
I think also the engineering department had a, a pretty good role in, in saving us money on this, this project too, so kudos to engineering department. Appreciate that.
If you're gonna compliment him, speak louder so he hears it.
Thanks Kobe.
That's hard of hearing, right?
That's a good deal. All right, any other questions or comments? Anyone? Okay Denise?
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Evans?
Yes ma'am.
Three's eight zero.
Okay, and next, we have a resolution authorizing the execution of a engineering service contract for street and drainage improvement to Forty Street and for other purposes, as part of